Where you from?
Lynette, Alabama, man. Cherry Drive, born and raised.
How was it growing up there?
Cherry Drive, man, it was a, it was a fun, eventful place, um, there was a lot going on back when I was young, younger and stuff, man. The city was, um, city was kind of on fire, whatever, um, you know, had the sports and stuff going on, on the high school. They were winning, they were winning a lot, um, city just was better. It was like more to do, like a little more vibrant. You know, you'd be able to like walk around. I remember like being able to like leave the door unlocked all night.
It was like a community.
Yeah, more like a community. It was more like togetherness and stuff too and all that. Like I remember back then, uh, you know, the time don't went by, like things don't change and stuff too. So like we don't have a lot of stuff leave the town. They look kind of like deserted and stuff in my, in my opinion and stuff too. So it's just, it's just weird to just see how it has changed over the time though. Not, not to say like it's a bad place or anything though, but it definitely changed from where it used to be.
Joe or Genuine?
I like Genuine, man.
Ooh, I like Genuine.
I like Genuine. I like Genuine. I'm more of like.
He won't play with that broom and that.
Yeah, like I'm more of like serenading type, type person or whatever and stuff. You know what I'm saying? So I love, I love Genuine. I remember when I was a younger child, I used to try to do them dances and all that type of stuff too. You be in the mirror like doing all type of.
Right, and that ticking.
Yeah.
How did you get into acting?
I've always been like a naturally funny person, bro, like I like to laugh and joke and have a good time. And then too, only type of person, like if I see somebody do something, like I feel like I can do it. So me and, me and a couple of my partners in college and stuff, we actually got together and like shot a movie off of iPhone. Um, I want to say it was like an iPhone, probably like an iPhone eight, I want, I want to think though. We got together and shouted it like and put it out and it actually was like pretty good, like a pretty big hit.
For real?
Yeah, it was called Possibility, Possibility with me, Last Chance and, um, and Mexican Hispanic, um, language or whatever. I know I'm saying that wrong, but it meant that and that and, um, we, we put it out, put it on YouTube. Um, a couple of people, local people in the valley that was in it and stuff, and it actually did some good numbers and stuff. And it's actually on Tubi now, which is.
Really? Okay, okay.
And, um, my good friend, Latavius Flynn, he, he actually shot that Marley Allen. He helped film it, um, and like it was a lot of like local people in it and stuff too. It was a trip, man. I really enjoyed it actually.
Two meals, two desserts and one drink.
I'm gonna go and tell you right now, they drank water, cause I stay with grandma, like we had coffee and water. Like I, I love coffee too, um, recently just got on this mushroom coffee called Rise and stuff too, so it's real good.
I heard about it. Is it good?
It's good, man. I've, I've been drinking it for like a month and like, I don't know, lost like eight pounds since I've been on it and, um. Yeah, like it crazy. I weighed myself today. I got it and I actually just weighed myself like a week ago and, um, got a lot of good benefits to you too and, um, like mental clarity and stuff, um, work with bloating. And I like the energy that it give, you know, like coffee caffeine, like when you consume it, like it gives you like a rush then. But this stuff is more like tire based or whatever. It releases more like through the day. So I went from drinking like three, four cups of coffee to just drinking two cups of that. I get one in the morning, then I get one midday and I'm straight.
Okay.
I don't even drink pre-workout no more. I be using, using that for that purpose. So it'd be real good to me, so.
I'm gonna have to try that.
And then far as meals go, I'm on a health, healthy tip, man. So like my go-to meal now, I eat, I get some like diced chicken. I put like some onions and peppers in it. Um, I get like some sweet potatoes and then I get some green beans. I'm a, I'm a green bean fanatic. I eat that like when I'm on anything, y'all. And two, and a simple one, I love steak and eggs too. I taste steak and eggs up, so.
Steak and egg.
Yeah, like John Souls in the valley, they actually got like a good frozen, like cut up steak that you can get and cook. And I actually eat it a lot, so.
Really?
Mm-hmm. So there's two meals, drank water, dessert. Man, I love pecan pie. I love, I love, I love pecan, I love pecan.
Pecan pie is pretty good.
Yeah, man, them pecan pie be swinging, man.
You gotta, you gotta have the rights on how to make it though.
And a, and a fun fact, I hate white condiments, man. Like I hate.
White condiments? What you mean?
Like mayonnaise. I can't stand like, I, I actually said this not too long ago. I could be on my deathbed and like they could probably offer me like, Mr. Archer, you could eat some mayonnaise and you'll probably come back. I would probably look at my son dead in his face and say, it's over my boy. I can't consume that mayonnaise. It's just something about it, man. I, I.
Oh, man.
I'm thirty-six and bro, I just ate ranch dressing for the first time like a month ago.
Oh, man.
I got scarred in school, man. They used to put too much of it on the, like them little square pizzas we used to eat and stuff. Like they used to drown it and it just made me not want it, but it's actually not that bad though. So I've been missing out on it.
Okay. And then second dessert, what?
Second dessert, uh, I love ice cream, man.
Ice cream.
Yeah, I taste white cream up, man. The butter, the butter pecan.
With you on it.
Love, love that, love that butter pecan. I might go get some when we get through, man.
You feel me?
Yeah.
How do you come up with your skits?
I got a funny family. So like a lot of my skits are like based off of things that we don't went through as a family. And then my friends too, like they're, they're a trip, man. Like so, a lot of that stuff is just based on real stuff where having a real conversation. Like it might be something that I did with my uncle when I was younger or whatever, but now I'm trying to like put it into like a video, a video form or whatever to put it out. So that was the main stuff. It comes from my family, man, for real.
Personal stuff.
Yeah, personal, personal stuff, just experiences I don't been through and stuff.
Something that's relatable, for sure.
And I always try to be that way too, man. There's so much fakeness in the world. Like you gotta be able to relate to your audience and the people like you, like the people like you dealing with too. And you gotta be an authentic, authentic person at all times though. It just.
I feel that.
It's just too much fakeness out here. Like even now, like alright, like with news, for example, you got people, when something happen, like they go straight to Facebook. And like they believe the first thing they see on Facebook. They don't do no research to try to validate that or see if it, to see the validity with it or anything. Like if they see it on Facebook, it's law. Like that's not, that's certainly, that's not necessarily the case.
Period. That's it.
You ain't even looking at the person who posted it. They like, they, they, they might, they, unless you're a level, might not be there or whether, or they might, not to talk about them or anything, but it might just not be a person that's abreast of what going on and they just saw some mess and just posted. Now you think it's law and now you spewing or spreading misinformation.
And then don't let them have quote unquote status. It just really gonna really go crazy after that.
But status, even with the quote unquote status, that, I don't even really believe in that. Cause what you, you might look at one person and feel like they on the pedestal and the same, other person might feel like they in the dirt, so.
Right.
So it just, it just depend, but to me, everybody the same, like ain't nobody better than another person. Um, all of us just running out, running our racing. You gonna get to where you got to be when it's time for you to get there.
Right.
Yeah.
But when it comes from a person that's so, 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 so-called got status, it hit a little different.
Right. And that, that's true.
Your top five music artists, local or industry?
A lot of local people don't get on me, cause I ain't listening if I don't ride. All y'all good, but I'm just focusing on what stuff I heard, um. So of course I'm from Lynette, so no, I love Bama Ties or whatever and stuff too. And that, that's the only local one I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, cause I don't wanna say what nobody talks about. I'm gonna go straight, straight industry. I'm a future fanatic, um, I'm, I love Drake too, man. Love Drake. So Bama Ties, Future, Drake, um, my parents live in Atlanta, so I do have a heavy, heavy ATL influence and stuff too, man. I love like OutKast and I love a lot of Rocco, you know, Gucci.
Of course you like Big Guwop.
Love Guwop. I love Jesus, I love Jesus too, man. Certain situation for, for each one of them, but like it's crazy now that I don't got older. I love listening to R and B music, like I love it, like it soothes me, calms me down and stuff and all that. I mean, and then too, like them R and B, them old R and B songs, like those was instruction, like when they were crying in the rain and all that type of stuff. Like they need, they need to get better at that type of music and stuff too, man. Like I got a, I got a seventeen-year-old son. He kid love the drill music, man. You be in the car with him. Like you, like what are they even talking about? But it's crazy, cause I even put him on a lot of the R and B stuff and I be in the car with him sometime and he'll play, he'll play some slow music. I be like, okay, so it clicking, or like listening to this so you, y'all can calm down, so.
Right, exactly. Man, please. So what, you think R and B dead?
It dead to some people, but it ain't, it ain't dead to me.
Right.
I, I, I love some R and B, man. I'm the type of guy, man, I cut that stuff off and I clean up, man.
Why a clothing brand and what does L F M stand for?
L F M. L F M stands for Learn From Your Mistakes. I really actually got that name from Quay Marbury. It's really a play off of his name, the initials of his name and stuff too. So I always try to make sure I shout out Quay whenever I say something about L F M, cause really the naming of it really came from him. But, um, learn from your mistakes, they're just a part of my life, like, cause you gotta be able to learn from these lessons and stuff. You can't, you can't keep getting taught the same lesson or whatever and stuff too. So like it's just a, it's just a play on words, um, learn from your mistakes, your experiences and stuff. And, um, try to put that in the clothes or whatever, so people can feel it and just know like you can't, you can bounce back from a mistake. Just cause you fall, that don't mean you can't get up. You might fall two or three times. You need to get up four times if you did. Like you constantly got to get up, pick yourself up. It's about motivating and pushing yourself and just pushing people. Like when I see somebody with L F M on, like I feel like they know, like they learned from their mistakes or whatever and stuff. And they trying to be like a better person and that's, that's all I'm trying to do like with it. Like I just want people to feel like they can bounce back when you go through something. Like it, it don't rain always. The storm only lasts so long, but the sun gonna come back out. But you gotta realize too, when you going in these storms too, get your umbrella, like it's on you if you gonna continue to get wet. That's just like now, if it raining, we step outside, yeah, we gonna get wet, but if we come back in hell, we not gonna get wet. So you gotta, you gotta figure out, figure out that for yourself. Everybody ain't gonna help you. You know, that stuff you gotta do yourself internally. And I don't have to do that too, so.
Yo.
Yeah.
So why clothing brand?
Clothing brand. I like clothes, um, I feel like I'm a fashionable person. And my whole thing with L F M, like I know people have like high-end brands and all that. I always just wanted to make something affordable, like that people could just grab, like and just feel, like feel proud of it and all that, um. Right now, campaign, and I was about to get ready to drop something, but the campaign kinda like took over my, my life. And then, you know, I'm in school getting a master's degree and then my son, this is his senior year coming up. So I just been so busy, but in the fall, don't coming back out with something, um, like sweatpants and sweatshirts and stuff for the actual winter and stuff too. I ain't gonna give back up on that. So it been a real busy time right now.
Drumline or Stomp the Yard?
Man, you asked the hard one then, boy. I'm telling you. Man, Nick Cannon was a trip, man, but I love Chris's name too, you know, and, um, that, that, it was just funny and something, yo, how they kept my boy off so quick, man. Like they, they ain't even let my boy breathe long. And I, bro, it's crazy. Like I remember females being hyped and excited for their movie, like See Breeze, See Breeze. And then the movie came out, no, See Breeze ain't last for six minutes or whatever and stuff, bro. Yeah. But I'm, I'm gonna go with, um, I'm go, I'm go with Drumline, man. Drumline, Drumline remind me of Alabama State. I had a lot of partners went down there too, man. Shout out, uh, ASU or whatever and stuff too.
That school you went to?
I went to, went to Auburn and I graduated, Auburn University, then I graduated from Troy. But I had a lot of friends that went down to Alabama State and stuff too. And, um, I just, I enjoy it, my grandma. I enjoy the atmosphere down there too. So Tuskegee, um, that too. So it reminds me of like all of that, like, so, you know, that, that'll be fun events to go to and stuff too. Have, have you ever been to like, um, a battle of the bands before?
Nope, I wanna go.
It fun. I didn't really think it was gonna be that much fun until I actually went and you, you know, they dancing, you see the folks in the crowd. You might see grandma over there getting down or whatever, like, like the ambiance of how it make you feel, like it make you feel real good too. And, and that, that type of stuff, like it hyped me up, you know, and it made me remember like pep rally and stuff in school or whatever.
I can only imagine, I can only imagine. What got you into politics?
It's, it's crazy, man. Like I've been down here like my whole life and like I said, I seen things change and go from one way to another way. And then, okay, like Trump is, Trump is in office now, like, so to me, Trump makes everybody feel like they can be involved in the same things. Like they normally wouldn't say like he putting a batter in your back to like be, I just say be disrespectful or just like spew stuff out, like, um. And it, it's crazy, cause I wanted to get into politics to kinda like combat that or whatever, combat that or whatever and stuff too. Like, um, like for down here, for example, we got kids and stuff, um, let me, hold on, let me, let me, let me, let me reverse back on that or whatever and stuff. Reason I got into politics, cause I really wanna make a change or whatever and stuff too. So I wanted to make a change down here, um, wanna try to do it on a smaller level to try to affect things on a bigger, bigger level down the road or whatever and stuff. Um, I see like the city not declining or anything, but it just not as vibrant as it possibly could be or whatever. So I would love to like insert myself into that, try to help change the community, um, try to build, build things back up and make Lynette like a more desirable place, like, like when I look online, like I, I saw a video on TikTok, like Lynette's like one of the, in the top ten worst cities to live in Alabama and stuff. And I didn't really like that when I saw that, cause I'm from down here and stuff, like. It like people make things look worse than what they actually are. So the one thing to mind, I wanted to change that and hopefully we can get a video out with like, this is one of the more desirable places, like to live and to be. So it's just a desire to lead and just wanna make change and all of that too. And like, like I said, I was raised by my grandmother, so I always had a desire to help, cause I always had to help her and stuff too. So I wanna bring that back to the city. I just wanted to help get the city in a better, better place.
Hey, that, that sound good. It need to be, cause that, that right now on social media.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like, I don't like when I see that. I, I, I don't, like I'm, like I'm from Lynette, like I'm Cherry Drive, Adele, like I don't. I don't like when people talking bad about our city. Like I just had a job. I'm not gonna even say what they employ, what they employ you, cause a lot of people know they employ you. But like the management just hated the city. Like they just would talk so bad about down here. And I used to always be like, well, they know I'm down here. Like why y'all constantly just talking bad about the city? But if for like people like that, like people that got a negative opinion down here, I promise, we gonna change that around. We gonna turn that, turn that negative to, negative to a positive.
What are your qualifications and why do you feel like you will be a strong candidate to run for city council?
I'm actually getting a master's degree in public administration, so I have that in December. So this is actually a part of a career, a career path as far as those lines go, um. And I know I'm the type of person, I'm a collaborative person. I like to network, like to talk, hardworking individual, innovative person. And I just don't give up, like, for example, it's crazy, but did you used to watch Dragon Ball Z when you was a child?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Like I love Goku and Vegeta. Like they just like to fight for no reason, but like they never like, they never like give up. And it's amazing, like that stuff still like motivate me to the, to this day or whatever and stuff. Like I go to the gym three, four times a week or whatever and stuff, but like that type of stuff like keep, keep me going. Like it crazy like how you learn lessons and things like that, cause like they never, they never gave up. And like I just have this attitude, like if I wanna do something, like can't nobody stop me with God. But I already don't talk to God and ask them for the strength and the direction to do whatever I got to do. So I just don't feel like nothing in my way. Like if it's something I really wanna do, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get the job done. And I'm gonna do what I got to do to get, get the job done. I'm, I'm just gonna do it.
What do you believe are the key issues the community face and how you feel like you gonna go about addressing them?
One big thing in Lynette is like the city, like you, men love pretty women. Women, a woman love a pretty man. Like Lynette is not as pretty as it could be. It's not attractive enough. Like we got a lot of trash, like people just don't care about how stuff look on the outside appearance. Like you gotta be able to attract stuff in, like people know, people not gonna wanna ride through, like I don't wanna stay here, like it's trash everywhere. Like it's, it's junky and stuff, um, we definitely need to address that, um, got infrastructure issues that we need to fix. Whether it's roads or like sidewalks or getting like wa, water, like in Shaw, in the Shawman area, um, I saw on Facebook where it was a comment made about us, us not, uh, a street not having water access, but like it's twenty twenty-five, like everybody should have sewage, water access and stuff too. So like straightening out, straightening things out like that, um, attract this, attracting, attracting businesses to the city of Lynette. So we can boost the economy up, um, we need to get, get more stores, there just more things to do for people. So they won't have to go to the valley or they won't have to go to West Point or they won't have to go to La Grange. So of course bringing businesses in to strengthen that up. We gotta invest in the youth. Got too many youth around with nothing to do, um, so.
Facts.
Trying to, like trying to, whether it's, whether it's getting them to the recreation department, like uplifting that so they can have things to do or finding like other things for them to do outside of sports and stuff too. Like I believe in education, um, we need to make sure that we're educating them so they can go into the future and be great. And to play out the education, everybody don't wanna go to college.
Facts.
Right. So some people might wanna go get a trade. They might wanna do something else. So incorporating that in. I would love to see like more mental health aspects, wellness and like that. I like to exercise. So God willing, if I win, the city finna get in shape. I'm telling y'all, telling y'all that now, so.
Right.
We about, we about to exercise, um, bring some type of mental, mental health, um, wellness, spirituality, um. People always complain about, and this is go back to infrastructure. A lot of people complaining about the utilities at Lynette. So I wouldn't mind taking a look at that and see what we can do to change that and, you know, whatever, whatever the people, whatever their hopes and desires is, I would love to get with them and try to expound on that. Like I'm, I'm here for them, so. And Lynette has a lot of good things in place now. I do wanna jump on those things and help expand those and just continue, continue to help. Like, like I said, I was raised by my grandmother, so I'm always used to helping her. Like I'm just a helping person. Like I really enjoy helping people and I want to bring that to the city. Like this is not for no seed. This ain't even for no, whatever they pay a month, like it's not for that. It's to, it's to help and get the city in a better, better place. And I wanna put that on paper, like, hey, I was able to help and I was able to do that. And I got a lot of interesting motivation too, cause my grandmother, I feel like this'll make her happy as well too. So I'm like internally motivated to do that. So I just wanna help them just get in a better place and that's, that's strictly it.
So how you go about addressing it though?
How do I go about addressing it? Um, getting with the residents, learning their concerns and putting pen to paper and stuff too. But it's easy to talk, it's easy to talk a, a big talk, but you gotta be able to do, to be able to do it too. Um, I'm gonna be new to government, so I'm not gonna get in there and say like I'm gonna snap my fingers and do this. But I'm coming at this with a worker mentality. When you get a job and you go training, you got a little time where you could be in training. You check these lists out like, okay, I'm ready to go out here or whatever and stuff too. So I'm ready to get in there, learn about the metric, learn how this stuff, the inner workings of it. And then put my spin on it while still addressing my resident concerns and the things they wanna do too. So while trying to make it a, a better city, I'm bringing like a, I wanna bring like a business like approach to it or whatever and stuff. When you go workplace, it's just like him, this your barber shop. If you ain't cutting no heads, you ain't making no money.
Right.
Or whatever, basically. So I wanna do the same thing with the city, but with that, with that concern and stuff. I wanna get that concern, learn what's going on, what's needed to be addressed. I want to address that, check that out the list and go on down the list to something else. Like I don't want anything, anything lingering. I'm not that type of person, like I like to see what's going on. I like to fix the issue then or whatever and stuff. Or start creating steps to fix the issue or whatever and go ahead and get it fixed and then go to another issue and stuff too, so.
Well, it ain't my barber shop, but I pretty much be in.
Right.
Pretty much, I be running.
Yeah.
Oh, which I'm grateful for.
Right. And that's another thing too, man, being, being grateful, cause like I tell people all the time, it could be worse.
Exactly.
It could be worse. So be grateful and thankful for like where you at now. Like I'm appreciative that I'm down here talking to you.
Hey, I appreciate you. What are your plans for attracting and retaining businesses in the community?
First off, there's gonna be a playoff making the city more beautiful or whatever and stuff too. So we're gonna, hopefully we can begin to clean up things, um, Lynette has actual areas and stuff where businesses could thrive and stuff, um. Getting out, talking to people, networking with them, potential investors or potential businesses and letting them know what we can offer to make them better and stuff too. Um, think about it, right here by the interstate, people coming up down the road every day, got kill plant, Auburn right, Auburn right there and stuff. So we're kinda like in the middle, in the middle of a lot of stuff too, um, and just try to sell that like access or whatever and stuff too, man. Cause like Lynette, like we got a meal site down there. Just think about it, if we would've put like a shopping plaza right there or something or whatever and stuff, um. Piggle Wiggly gone in the net, which was a big blow to Lynette. Hopefully we can get something, something right there or whatever and stuff. But we need to get businesses down here for the economy. Then too, hopefully we can get local people and jobs in these places and stuff too, so it can benefit two-fold or whatever. You down here working, you got somewhere to work or whatever and stuff. And we're using those, that tax money, them tax dollars to help build the city up and just help get it in a better place or whatever and stuff too, so.
But how you go about doing that though? How you go about getting that outlet to the people?
Well, that networking, um, social media, having meetings, meetings and stuff, um, gonna be a lot of like groundwork doing. Had to get out, talk to people and stuff, um, and just sell ourselves actually and stuff too, so.
How do you plan to engage with the people and to make sure their voices are heard?
Um, I'm a very accessible person, like you shoot me a text message, shoot me an email, write me on social media. But, but people in my district, one, I do plan on, and I'm in the process of doing this now too, going door to door, introducing myself to people. Letting people know that like I'm accessible and I wanna hear like what they have going on. Um, I do, I do plan on hosting a town hall within the upcoming few weeks to actually get with them and like just listen to them and get their concerns wrote down and stuff. And, um, like I said, I'm, I'm a very accessible person, um, I'm easy to talk to and I, and these are conversations like I want to have or whatever and stuff too. But that's where everything starts with the basis of a conversation or whatever, to, to help grow into something else. So right now, I'm just gonna try to be a sponge as much as possible, listening to people and going from there. And that's, that's not only if you in District One, that's if you in Lynette, period. Like, I mean, I'm running for District One, but I'm gonna be here to serve the whole city if I'm, if I'm successful with it. So whether you on the east side or you in the west side of Shaw, or you in Bluffton, or you on Philip Road or wherever. Like if you stay in Lynette, I'm trying to help you. And I wanna hear, I wanna hear to help you and I want to just, I wanna foster like a more collaborative spirit in the city. Like, cause all of us got to work together. We gotta work together to get this to a better place. It ain't no time to point fingers or this is why they were wrong or this is why that were wrong. We just know it wrong, so let's just fix it. It ain't, it don't, it, that, that part is old. We, we paid that now. Let's repair this and try to repair something else. Cause it always something to do.
It is. It always is.
Yeah.
So why District One?
That's the district that I live in. So you're running for city council, you have to live in the district that you're particularly running for. Um, this district is on Cherry Drive, like I got, I ain't gonna say it like the roughest side of Lynette, but like I got the projects, both of the projects, um, know, down by, um, City Hall, back over by, um, Gussel Church. It's a, it's a good area. I was really surprised to see how many people like I had in my, in my district. So, um, I'm ready for it. It's actually areas that I've traveled and traversed like my whole life or whatever and stuff too. And, um, I know it's a lot of older residents, residents in the district that I remember from being a little boy and stuff. So I, I'm looking forward to like getting out and meeting them and like showing them like, hey, this still that same child y'all used to see like walking, walking to Ray Bell or walking to the junior high or walking to, walking to high school or whatever and stuff too. Cause like the district I'm in, my grandmother actually left me the house that I'm, that I'm currently living in now. So like I'm well versed in building my whole, my whole life actually. And, um, a lot of the people in the district, they're lifelong residents and stuff too. So I'm just looking forward to getting back out and making that connection with them and stuff too, so we can continue to further it and just letting them know like, I'm here to help, I'm here to help y'all. Like I'm, I'm looking forward to like going in the project, knocking on doors and stuff and, um, you know, I'm just, I'm really looking forward, looking forward to that.
That's a good thing. Instead of somebody just moving downhill and staying in the district all of a sudden and then randomly just start running for a council. It's a good thing. It's a real good thing. You born and raised there, yo, and everybody know you, you gonna be very comfortable.
Right, right, right. And I, like, I'm a real approachable person. Like I love having conversations and stuff too, man. So I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that though. I really am.
What is your vision for the community and how you gonna go about achieving it?
My vision, man, it's, it's a, it's a big vision, but, um, like I said, it centers on the youth, advancing them, getting them in programs, whether it's like recreational programs. Who I hope we, we can help build up the recreation department, which is actually in my district as well. And, um, Mr. McCamp, he be doing a good job over there, so I'm looking forward to collaborating with him to like make it better and stuff. Um, like I said, I wanna get them education, get them in education, whether it's STEM programming, uh, whether it's, um, whether it's like trades or whatever and stuff. Like we have like a good infrastructure around here with plants and stuff too. Um, so in my mind, we got kids that wanna go, go to work straight out of high school. Why we're not trying to work with them to like get them opportunities where they can go in their shadow? You might have somebody that you can go ahead and hire off the bat, you know what I'm saying, or whatever and stuff too. So making a big investment with them, um, to help get them off the street, the kids. Um, I don't wanna forget about the elderly, cause they're a big, strong part of the, of the community and stuff too. So wanna continue to serve their needs, um, get with them. I want to make things easier, easier for them, um. So want to make sure we focus on them. Again, I said like the infrastructure, that needs improving. Eco, the economy continuing to build on it, um, especially in another thing like safety. I do wanna try to, like the, with the police interaction or whatever and stuff, like a lot of people, like they see the police, they think something wrong or whatever. But the police is a public servant too. Like he just doing a job. So do kinda wanna like bridge that, bridge that gap and like make that not, not as like such, you know, but it's gonna be, it gonna, it gonna be rough though, you know what I'm saying? They, they, they here to do a job, so I don't want people to feel like they're not, they not doing something wrong. But people gotta understand too, if the police come around, you might be doing something you weren't supposed to be doing. So you gotta like, people gotta look at yourself, like what you doing and what you got, what you got going on too. Right, cause they probably wouldn't be over here, some crazy one going on, but at the same time, if something crazy is going on, you do need that man to come in here and save you or whatever and stuff. So I do want to like kinda try, kinda like build a relationship with them or whatever and like with the kids or whatever and stuff too, just to show that.
But I kinda feel like now, when, when we talk police now, now I do kinda feel like is, the police gotta kinda, they gotta kinda be, uh, approachable as well. And they need to go out and, and, you know, talk to people. But I also understand on the other side that I know me growing up, I was taught to run. When you see the police, no matter what, it don't matter, just run.
Right. And a lot of people talking, that actually, that actually was something I, that actually is something I was taught too or whatever and stuff. But I don't realize like it's getting older. Yeah, you wanna run, but if you ain't really got no reason to run, why you, why you running? Cause then they still bringing light on you too or whatever and stuff. So it's kinda, it's kinda two-fold. I know there's like a, a dynamic issue or whatever and stuff, but again, like I said, you, you need them, cause they're just like if somebody were to break in here now. We probably finna call, we probably gonna call the police, cause I had to handle some business or whatever. Yeah, cause that, that's what, that's what they're here for. So I feel like police would probably be like more, they should be active, but more like in the background, like a engine, like a motor running in the background. You don't hear the motor running, but you know it there, like if they need it, if you need to use it or whatever, instead of that makes sense.
It do. But I still feel like police gotta be more.
They gotta be approachable now.
They gotta be approachable, man. There's too many, I know too many, I ain't gonna say I know, but I'm gonna say this. It's a handful of officers that I can honestly say, you can't really just, you can't. You can't go over there and just kick it with him without him interrogating you.
Right, I mean that's just like this like you say you getting pulled over for a ticket, you got some police, they come to the car aggressive on the rip. And then you guys on they calm like hey, you know they got a more calming tone, you probably receive the ticket a little better. Because he's not on the on that extra stuff so you are right like they do, like they're a public servant, they got to have like a certain level of restraint. Or respect dealing with the dealing with the public or whatever and the public got to understand, they gotta have that same kind of restraint too in a in a sense in a sense too.
We know you are the police. We know you the enforcer, we know that, you don't have to be. They know that already like, your job is to de-escalate, not escalate.
Right, right, and I and I de- and I definitely agree with that, I agree with that.
And I don't know if your district covered this or whatever. Shawma Day.
Shawma Day, my my I had a grandmother that grew up in Shawma, lived in Shawma, lived in Pinecrest so. I'm affiliated with the Shawma community and my dad is actually from Shawma too like. It's crazy, he lives in Atlanta but he literally tell people like where you from, I'm from Shawma, Alabama, he don't say Lynette, he say Shawma, I'm Pinecrest or whatever and stuff so. They kind of mean something to my heart, Shawma Day, I I've been to all the Shawma Day events, they were fun and all that and it's.
One second, Shawma is Lynette, right?
Yeah, Shawma's Lynette.
Shawma is Lynette, alright.
I've been to the Shawma Day events, they are fun um, it's something that I would like to do but it needs to just be set up. In a particular way so it can be successful and stuff um, I I I do remember them saying like it did bring like an economic boost down here. Like so we can look at it from that aspect or whatever cuz we'll bring money to the city but people gotta understand, everybody wanna party. But it's a way it's a way to party um, I do believe that it can be done in an organized way where it could benefit the city. And it could benefit the residents for Shawma, but again like I said is it has to be done in an organized way, I'm all for having a conversation to do that, I'm not. A proponent of not having it or whatever and stuff, I do understand people wanna have fun, I like to have fun. But we need to do it in a in a certain way like so nobody's getting hurt, it's um it's organized. I think they said one thing like the about the traffic flow congestion and if we can pull enough resources together to make it happen. I do feel like it can be like an annual successful event, successful event down here and stuff too wait and it could be something that maybe we can replicate and have it like on the on the bigger scale like. If you notice like homecoming don't start coming a big thing around here, what is that LaFelt, Lynette or Valley and stuff. And like those are like little small examples where those are successful weeks or whatever and stuff. Shawma Day is something, it's not homecoming but it it kind of is homecoming for that for that area or whatever and stuff too if you think about it and think about it like in a sense or whatever and stuff. And I and I do feel like it can be done in a successful and organized way and like I said, I'm not adverse to having uh having a conversation um. If it ever comes about, I'm pretty sure I will be a part of that conversation and just to let the people know is is I'm I'm not against it but. Again, I'm one person, I can't promise nothing to say this is gonna happen or that is gonna happen but I'm open to having a conversation on figuring out a way to have that. In a successful way so it's good and benefits the Shawma area, Lynette area and whoever wants to whoever wants to be involved in it and stuff too and they actually did. Good jobs and stuff, the last time they had it, I remember the first time they had it, it was just it was like blow, I still have that memory like in my Snapchat and like it pops up on. One of my good friends on, I link him like a like a little brother but he actually bigger than me, bank, LaMasque, well, he's from he's from Shawma, he's from Shawma or whatever and stuff too so. He he's Shawma to the core but like that that's my boy so and I know he enjoys it so like like I said, I'm not. I ain't adverse to having that conversation like I I like to see people smiling, I like to see people happy and I know there's one thing that will make a lot of people happy. If we do do it but it has to be done like in it gotta be done in the in the in the effective way or whatever and stuff too so.
I'm just man cuz I ain't never had a chance to go, I always be stuck in here cutting half for 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 everybody, the late comers always wanna. Now I gotta go to Shawma Day, I'm still stuck here cutting half.
And I hope you did double, triple charging them for the for the income, I let this man enjoy himself, enjoy himself when he can.
But yeah man, you got any promo, anything you wanna promote, you know?
Uh, again, learn from your mistake, clothing line, y'all go get that um, do have a podcast coming soon, like I was saying, the campaign kind of came in and I had to kind of. Shift my focus away from it to like making this be successful as it is so I do plan on coming back out when the fall with that um. I wanna just shout out in, I wanna shout out and plug any local brand around here and stuff like I hope y'all be successful man, do what y'all got to do um. The kids man, I do wanna shout them out too at the summertime, I hope y'all. I hope y'all not doing nothing crazy, I hope y'all being productive with your time, I hope the athletes, I hope y'all training, getting ready for the upcoming season or shout out to Lynette High School, high school I graduated from. Hopefully they have a a good upcoming season, matter of fact, shout out all on Valley High, I hope y'all do good. LaFelt, troop with my son, go ahead, I hope all these kids be successful um. I hope it like bro, I hope you have a successful summer, I hope you cut so many heads, your hand get so. I want anybody to do, I want anybody to do good this year or whatever, I'm trying to trying to just keep a positive attitude and I'm trying to. Put out positivity every day and one big thing I wanna push, one big thing I wanna push. I hope people are getting a relationship with God or whatever and stuff too man like for example, I just was telling my son the other day. Your life is like a movie or whatever and stuff, your the script already written, you going through it every day doing stuff but you freestyling your ad lib and stuff when you can really. Develop your relationship with God, he the director like add something going on so he can help guide the step so you can be successful so. That that's what I wanna close out on, if you ain't got no relationship with God, get in that Bible, read no scripture, there are examples. And instruction for life cuz in no scriptures it, I promise you if you read no scripture, you'll see a reflection of stuff you going through or whatever and stuff too and it'll help you probably get through the situation so. Get with God, get with the app, get with the director so you can perform in your show the best.
For sure man, amen, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate you having me man.